Have a motion to go back into public session.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for March 8th, 2021. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Followed by a moment of silence for our armed forces and those in our community who have lost loved ones, especially the mother of Karen Madalena.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to start with public comment and what is the public comment similar to how we did it last meeting? The first public comment is for agenda-related items and that was to have been emailed to our district clerk by 4:00 PM. The second public comment will be live and we will allow people at the end to speak. We will give you the information at that point, but please know that your name on your screen must match the name that you give us. So if you have to change it, please do it now. Evette, did anybody send in public comment?
For agenda-related, no, I did not receive any and nor did I receive any for none.
Thank you. Okay, Ron, we'll pass it over to you.
Good evening. Thank you so much, Jackie and members of the board for the opportunity to present this evening. We have some terrific presentations for you, some really meaningful and important presentations. I've shared with our school community the importance of the social and emotional well-being of our students and how important that is to not only myself, but to all of my colleagues here in the district. We have been working just literally around the clock to support our students and we wanted to provide our board and our community with an update on some of the great work that's happening under the leadership of Mike Rosen, our Director of PPS here in the district. And we're also going to be sharing a very special announcement with the board this evening as well that I think everyone will be optimistic and pleased to hear. So Mike, Caroline, I see you on this call and I see so many of my colleagues on this call. I've spent a lot of time with our clinicians this year, especially our social workers this year and they are just an outstanding group and I thank them for everything that they're doing. So Mike, at this time, I will turn the presentation over to you.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Hatter. Can I, just before we get started, we had trouble getting in with the link and I don't know how many people are participating, but we ended up having to copy and paste the link to get into the meeting. So I don't know if parents had trouble from the website as well, because I only see, I thought I saw 30 people. So I don't know if that's the norm, but we were struggling to get in through the link on the website.
So Jen, Jennifer, I see that you're on this call as well as an attendee. Jen, if you can just go on to our website and just ensure that that link is functioning properly. We certainly want as many members of our community to access our board meetings as possible. So Jennifer will absolutely take a look at the link on our website. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, Mike.
No problem.
Do you want to wait a minute to see if we get more people or do you want to keep moving on? If there are coming in specifically for Mike's presentation, what do you want to do?
You know, let's give Jen about 30 seconds to take a look at the website. It's a relatively quick, especially for someone who's as skilled as Jennifer is, it's a relatively quick task to update the link on the website.
One of the good things about these Zoom meetings is we do have a lot more participation from the community, which is a really nice thing.
Absolutely.
We had hundreds of people, hundreds of people on our last meeting and then hundreds of people on the meeting prior to that. And I think that's just absolutely terrific and it looks like we have a relatively nice-sized group today and I think more will be joining us. Okay, so the link on the website is correct. Everything is there. We posted it on the main site. So anyone who's looking to access the meeting at this point should be able to access the meeting.
And they tweeted out that that link is correct just to make sure if people want to look and then we can start.
Try to do that. Okay, very good. At this point, we'll turn the meeting back over to you, Mr. Rosen. Thank you so much.
Ron, good evening, Mrs. Carbone, Mr. Miniani, Board Trustees, Dr. Hatter, Mrs. O'Shea, Mr. Cole. Thank you for the opportunity to share the work that our clinical team provides on a daily basis. For anyone out there who doesn't know me, my name is Mike Rosen. I'm the Director of PPS and it's my honor to be the Director of PPS Pico Personnel Services here in Yorktown. I'm also joined by Caroline Almeida, who's the Assistant Director, as well as representatives from our clinical team throughout the districts. I'm going to share a little background and then turn the presentation over to the clinical team. Each clinical team member will be introduced or introduce themselves prior to sharing information about their specific building. Within the PPS department and with all of our related service providers, we continue to work proactively to support our school community. I've had the wonderful opportunity at the end of August to share the work that took place throughout the summer. I spoke about how proud I was to work in Yorktown because of our focus on the whole child. I shared with you that Yorktown was one of only a handful of the school districts in the area that opened their doors for in-person learning for our students eligible for extended school year program. I also shared that we were able to successfully support over 100 students with a four-week virtual skills program that included special instruction, speech, and occupational therapy. Due to our ongoing concerns regarding the mental health issues in our community and the difficulty of our families to access services in Westchester County, Dr. Hatter, who has been very involved with some of our more complex cases, set up a meeting with Michael Orth, who is the Westchester County Commissioner of Community Mental Health. Mr. Orth is a wonderful resource who just this past year helped us navigate all the red tape in order to arrange for appropriate services for one of our students. That initial meeting that I attended with Dr. Hatter and Mrs. O'Shea took place back in November. And based on that discussion, we scheduled a follow-up in December that would include our clinical team members. We also decided that since mental health issues are not only a concern in the Yorktown Central School District, we opened up, invited our neighbors in Lakeland and we had administrators and clinicals team members from Lakeland join us as well. Mr. Orth invited a number of agencies and individual providers within Westchester County to participate. And he asked them to provide updates on their services and availability. The meeting went well, but similar concerns continue to be evident. It is very difficult for our families and our staff to navigate through the issues of finding appropriate services and available providers. The last piece of this was a follow-up meeting that we had with our clinical team to debrief. At that point, that was my aha moment. It was not that I didn't know all that was taking place in the buildings, but when you start to talk about it all at one time, it's just amazing how proactive we have been with the work over the years and all of our buildings that continues to be a wonderful resource for our school community. As a result of that meeting, I also want to share that most recently, one of the agencies, Westchester Medical Center, contacted Dr. Hatter and we've been offered a grant of $150,000 to provide mental health support and services at the secondary level with the middle school and high school. One of the most exciting aspects of the grant is that it would include a liaison who could help our families attain the support that is required. This opportunity is available because a doctor from the Westchester Medical Center participated in that December meeting and was impressed by all the work in this area that we do here in New Yorktown Central School District. Finally, I want to share with you that with your support, we have been able to add additional resources to our team. This year, we added a full-time board-certified behavior analyst to support the students and programs at Brookside School. In January, we were able to add a new psychologist at Yorktown High School for the remainder of this year to help with the increased counseling demands and to support students who are returning to the building upon discharge from a hospital setting. I've been in the district in various roles for over 20 years and I've watched our staffing increase based on the needs of our students. None of this is possible without all of your support, so I thank you. I'm going to turn the presentation over. Dr. Sandor is going to start and then each building will share something that is either unique to their building or something that they are very proud of. As you'll see in the presentation, there's a lot going on and we can always revisit some of the other pieces at a future meeting. There are a number of common supports at each level that we've included, but would not be focusing on at this time, such as building level and mandated counseling and clinical team meetings. At the end of the presentation, we will certainly be available to answer any questions that you have regarding the programs and services provided within our school community. And I'm pleased to introduce Dr. Denise Sandor, who is a school psychologist at Brookside and our clinical team coordinator. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike, and thank you so much for that introduction. Before we get started on presenting our work, you did such a great job in thanking Dr. Hatter and the board and we also want to take a moment to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Hatter and Mrs. O'Shea for their support of our clinical services team and for our ongoing work. Your support's very evident just by asking us to present here tonight, so thank you. Of course, we would be very remiss to also not thank Mr. Rosen, Ms. Almeida, and our building principals who support our work, our efforts, and the needs of our students every day. And with that, we're really excited to focus tonight on what we know has been a challenge for our students, our families and our staff, and that is addressing the social and emotional needs and learning of our students. We could switch slides, please. We've put together some slides that highlight some of our work in each of the building, but just to start off, this is just a general idea to describe that one of the reasons that SEL, or Social and Emotional Learning, has come to the forefront for many districts, including ours, is that we've been experiencing a mental health crisis in our country for several years. Depression, anxiety, suicide rates are higher than ever, and even our youngest of children are afflicted as we see with incoming kindergarteners, for example. Of course, COVID-19 has only exacerbated this, but this is a longstanding issue that will remain with us for some time. This slide presents some pretty staggering statistics. If you read it carefully, feel free to access the original work and the article. I have given you the link there and there's many more statistics on mental health that is in that link provided. For our next slide? Thank you. Aside from addressing the expanding immediate needs of our youth who are confronted with social and emotional and mental health-related difficulties, we also know that research guides us that in order to be a successful student in general, social and emotional well-being is just as important as other what we call protective resources. Things like food, shelter, sleep, health, all of that enables us to learn and thrive and reach our full potential. At Yorktown, our clinical team has sought over the years to develop, enhance, and deliver a high level of both proactive and reactive programs and services to ensure that we're teaching all of our students the skills that they need to do their best. Today, we're just going to show you a small sampling from each of our buildings of some of our efforts. So for our next slide, please. We're going to be starting with our youngest schools, starting with the K-3 schools and work our way up through the grades. In looking at our SEL work at Brookside, we've come so very far in just a few years. But one sample of work that we're probably the most proud of is our development and implementation of our own social and emotional learning lessons. We've used the CASL or Collaborative for Academic Social and Emotional Learning to guide us as we have developed a unique tailor-made series of lessons that we will not only help our students learn to identify and manage their feelings for today, but they'll be prepared to engage in the higher level of work offered in the schools above them. You're going to see on this slide some bulleted examples, some links to see some of the things that we have worked on and a better understanding of what is the CASL core competencies. And that is also, I believe, Mrs. Wordsman will talk about that at Mohansick as well. Probably my favorite link, if you're going to click on anything, would be the Hey Little Ant. I think it's a great example of one of our adorable, and you can go ahead and click on that if you don't mind. Just shows you how we present books, stories, videos to the kids with our competencies in mind, how we want to address that area of learning for our students. Thank you, Evette. And for our next slide, just some information. In addition to our full-school-wide efforts, we also, of course, support targeted students in many ways through mandated and building-level counseling. As Mr. Rosen explained before, we've sought to enhance these supports such as through building a sensory space or Zen Den at Brookside. We draw upon intensive behavioral supports and expertise through our behavior consultant and now our behavior specialist that's on staff and we really sought and experienced some advanced staff training. With these supports in place, we've developed a full continuum of what is SEL services to meet the needs of all of our students. With that, I'm going to turn over things to Mrs. Katie Wordsman, our social worker at Mohansick Elementary School.
Thank you, Denise. Evette, if you can just move to the next slide, thank you. So as Denise mentioned, there's a lot happening at our K-3 buildings. As you know, K-3 buildings are the place where the foundational skills that are needed for academic success begin. It is also the place where the foundational skills needed for good mental health and social and emotional success begin as well. We're doing lots of things and you can look at our slides to see them, but what I wanted to highlight tonight was something that we developed over the summer in thinking about what school was going to look like this year and how we had been presenting our SEL lessons and how we had been supporting teachers. We thought we needed to do something new. So what we did this year at Mohansick is we developed an internal website. You can see it on here. It's called the Mohansick Best Website. Evette, if you click on that, that'll take us. Like Brookside, we have developed a lot of lessons, but we needed a place to house them this year. And so we created this space. So if you see, any teacher in Mohansick can go to this website and along the top, you see it says home, what is SEL? And then if you click on where it says SEL Lessons at the top, if I was a kindergarten teacher, I would go, if you go backwards, it says SEL Lessons, you'll see there's a drop-down by grade level. There you go. Yeah. So if you just click on kindergarten, then what comes up is Lessons by Competency. Dr. Sandor made reference to the CASL five core competencies, self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. So you could go into any of those competencies and click on one of the lessons. You can go ahead and pick one, Evette, just to give people an idea of what that might look like. So under Responsible Decision-Making, a lesson would come up about how to resolve conflicts peacefully. So we found that this has been really, really helpful to our teachers this year. Teachers' mental health, that's been a concern for all of us and they were feeling very overwhelmed and how are they now going to be expanding their SEL lessons? And so in creating this site, we think that it's been very helpful for them and we've certainly gotten a lot of positive feedback on it. So that's something that's new and exciting that we did at Mohansick this year. And if you go back just to the the regular slides, you'll see thanks and on to the next slide that we also have an array of services that we provide. But we wanted to focus tonight sort of on that universal Tier One SEL and the internal website that we had created to really support teachers in doing that work this year. So now I will pass it on to Nicole Toco, who is our psychologist at CramPond.
Thank you, Katie. So similar to what my colleagues at the K-3 level explained, CramPond utilizes a variety of approaches to support the social and emotional functioning and development of both staff and students at the fourth and fifth grade level. So on this slide, what you will see is a little bit of what we're doing at CramPond. And we do have our PBIS lessons and they encompass not only social and emotional learning, but also character education and they tie into DASR-related themes. In addition to that, they are also supported by Ruler and that's what I'd like to highlight for everybody today. I'd like to talk a little bit about Ruler. So Evette, if you can just click on to the next slide, please. Perfect. Excellent. So Ruler is a systematic approach that aims to promote the development and emotional intelligence, primarily those associated with recognizing, understanding, labeling, expressing, and regulating emotions, hence Ruler. Ruler relies on four core tools, which are also known as anchor tools, to accomplish this. And I'd like to talk a little bit about the four tools. So the first tool is a charter. The charter is utilized to establish safety and a positive climate within the classroom. We've done not only classroom charters, but also staff charters. And what we do is we have them posted around the school building. We have them in the classrooms. We have them in our faculty lounge in our main office. And what we'd like to do is we also like to, as a staff, create our charter to really establish the safety and positive climate of the building. Second, we have the mood meter and that's what you'll see here on this slide. The mood meter is used to increase self-awareness and emotional regulation. Essentially, how we utilize this is we check on students' emotions throughout the day. When the students first enter the building behind Dr. Roberts, as she greets everybody coming in, we do have a mood meter and students can check in to say, I'm coming in and I feel, for example, surprised or I feel, for example, down. And what we do is we identify that feeling and we can also talk about ways that we can get ourselves to a more positive or pleasant feeling. And really, we can use our meta-moments for that. A meta-moment is used to manage an emotional response when triggered. So essentially, we're utilizing the meta-moment to take ourselves from one emotion to the next. And then lastly, the fourth anchor tool of Ruler is the blueprint and that's used for perspective-taking. So the child's ability or the staff member's ability to see things from other people's perspectives and coming into CramPond and learning about Ruler and getting to implement this, I think, has really been valuable. And what I see is that the children are utilizing this independently. They're utilizing this in the classroom. They're utilizing this in counseling sessions. You'll pass by a classroom and you'll hear teachers saying, where do you fall on the mood meter today? So I think it's really making us very much aware of our emotions, how we need to become in tune with them and how we can change them if they are negative emotions, but also if they are a positive emotion, how we can utilize them to get through our day and to have successful accomplishments throughout that day. So at this time, I'd like to pass it on to one of the social workers we have at the middle school, Penny Jones.
Thank you, Nicole, and good evening, everyone. I'm going to ask if you could advance to the slide, the next slide. It has the rocks on it. Yes, that one. And so I just would like to take a few minutes to just give focus to our building clinical team approach to addressing students struggling with social, emotional, and behavioral concerns. Our team consists of the guidance counselors, the psychologists, the nurse, the social worker, the bully prevention counselor, and the administrators. And when a student is struggling, the team addresses it confidentially and with a restorative approach. Student concerns are most often brought to our attention by teachers and parents and sometimes by the students themselves. In most cases, it begins with the counselors, the guidance counselors, who will conduct an initial triage to assess the problem and provide support to the student, the teacher, and the parent. If the issue continues to be a concern and/or requires further intervention, the guidance council will refer the student's case to the building clinical team. The team meetings are coordinated by the psychologists. It is here that all the information that has been given by teachers and parents regarding the student's need is presented and the various professional perspectives to addressing the problem are shared. First things first, we rule out the medical. And that means the nurse gives insight to any medical, physical, or medicinal information that could be impacting the student's mental, emotional, or behavioral state. If found it, then the nurse will give feedback as to what symptoms, side effects, or behaviors are to be observed. The social worker gives clinical insight on internal and external factors that may be contributing to the student's social, emotional, and mental state as it relates to the behaviors they are presenting. The bully prevention counselor will give input regarding peer-to-peer conflicts that she believes may contribute to the student's concerns and conflict resolutions that could help the case. If and when any disciplinary actions need to be taken, the administrator will make that determination and the team discusses the best approach that will give focus to what can be learned from the experience versus punitive consequences. So if a student's behavior violates the code of conduct, underlying factors that led to the behavior are addressed as well. Once all of the professional perspectives have been shared, a plan of action is created for addressing the student. This plan may include building-level services and/or resources from the community. The parents are always informed and this plan, informed of this plan and carried out with their approval. In addition to individual student concerns, there have been occasions when a crisis occurred and impacted the entire school community. Intervention by the clinical team was not only given to the students, but expanded to the entire building staff. This was a necessary step to ensure that the needs of all staff who are first responders were addressed so that they would be in a state of readiness to address the needs of the students. For instance, when our school experienced the recent and sudden passing of a beloved teacher, our district clinical team provided support to our building clinical team. Their assistance helped us to process our own feelings of grief, enabling us to then provide guidance to our building. Our building clinical team provided counseling support to the teachers first. Then we created a script that the teachers used to address the loss with their students. We were present in the classrooms and throughout the building and was available to students who wanted to discuss it beyond the classroom and in the days to come. So this is a brief summary of our building's clinical approach to addressing the social and emotional needs of our students. Thank you. And now I would like to introduce my colleague, Justine Gregorio, from the high school.
Thank you, Penny, and good evening. So this is really an overview at the high school of the social, emotional supports that are always available to our students. I just want to highlight one of our, one of the bullet points on this slide. We, during the pandemic, due to some of the COVID concerns, we did not have our mindfulness space available and open for students in person. The mindfulness space is really a room dedicated to students to utilize throughout their school day if they are feeling overwhelmed and just need a place to kind of decompress and utilize strategies to be able to cope with whatever they're going through and feeling to then be able to reintegrate themselves into the classroom setting, similar to what Dr. Sandor referenced at Brookside as the Zen Den. So because the mindfulness room was not open this school year, we did, we were able to still utilize the virtual mindfulness space, which is actually a website that we created and we have shared it with our students to still be able to support them and provide them with coping strategies when they are experiencing stress throughout the day. Evette, you can go to the next slide. Okay. So at the high school level, knowing that the pandemic really really was impacting all of our students, we wanted to be able to increase our identification and outreach to more students. So as a clinical team, we began to brainstorm how we could do that. One of the things that we really thought would be important was to outreach to our faculty for different faculty presentations. We know that we have wonderful teachers that our students become very close with, that they feel comfortable opening up to them. So we figured, you know, our students are seeing, our teachers are seeing our students every day. It's important for us to be able to equip the teachers with skills about how to respond, knowing that our students are experiencing increased mental health needs. So Mr. DiGennaro actually shared a presentation with our staff. It was a presentation by the JCK Foundation and they partnered with Bosse's and I was able to view that presentation. It was very evident to me after viewing that presentation that they had great energy and I really liked the message. So we were then able to collaborate with the JCK Foundation and bring them to a faculty presentation. The goals of the presentation, the first was really to allow our teachers and staff to be able to identify students who are struggling. The second goal was really teaching strategies so that our faculty feel more comfortable talking with our students about mental health. This included a conversation where our clinical team actually presented about what to do if a student is in crisis and how can teachers then link them up and refer them to appropriate resources within our school building. and how can teachers then link them up and refer them to appropriate resources within our school building. The next goal of the faculty presentation by JCK was to review how teachers can create positive social environments to promote mental health in their classroom setting. Lastly, it was really important for Mr. DiGennaro and us as the clinical team to recognize that our teachers are also all impacted during the pandemic. And so as caretakers, it's important to be able to equip them with coping skills as well, to then be able to better serve the students. So we did also include in the presentation some self-care and stress management techniques for our faculty. Now I'm actually going to turn over the presentation to Jessica McKenzie, who's our psychologist at the high school with me.
Hi, everyone, thank you so much. I have the nice privilege of speaking glass out of the clinicians from the district and I just want to share personally how proud I am to be a part of this team that has such a beautiful developmentally appropriate progression of support from K all the way up through 12. We speak about Castle for our little guys into Ruler for our Crampon students. And then really the dialectical and behavior therapy type skills that we're teaching about emotion regulation and really kind of managing your distress. And I just feel really proud to have this team that is working so nicely together in that way. So as Mrs. De Gregorio said, a big focus of ours at the high school was with our large numbers of students, how can we support our faculty in being the eyes and ears that we, that they are and we need them to be? So another presentation we brought in by the cognitive behavioral consultants of Westchester really looked at self-care tips for the faculty. Specifics about even just emotional check-ins for you and where you're at. How we can practice radical acceptance during this time of complete uncertainty. Some please skills that really talk about your own personal emotional vulnerability and how we can manage some of those things. And what was really nice about this presentation is it was more practical in nature about the idea that as adults and as teachers and educators, us modeling these skills for our students is the best way for them to learn them. So sharing a little emotional vulnerability on our part that we're struggling and this is something I'm doing to help myself and it might help you is really going to go a long way. So I think really accessing our faculty has been our goal to really kind of access our students more directly. As far as the virtual learning components we have as a building, really tried to offer some additional tips for virtual learning which are shared there. So I bet if you don't mind just clicking on that one for us, for us about, and thank you. This was developed by our clinical and guidance team to really give some practical ways to support our students and families during this time. A lot of the questions we were getting were, what can I do to make this a little bit easier? With all that the district's been doing, it was a practical way in a time of chaos to give some really concrete methods to really sort of improve our chaotic situation. You can go back to that, thank you so much. And move on to the next slide if you don't mind. So our continued goals really as a high school are to really combine with our elementary buildings to really make it a more universal approach, which some of those things have been done already this year. Our Husker Discovery Program has already been meeting with some of the fourth graders. Our VASTA Club continues to outreach to our lower grades. And we really hope to continue that partnership for the betterment of our students and to really help our faculty feel supported by all of us. I'm going to pass it on to Caroline Almeida.
Thank you, Mrs. McKenzie, and thank you to Dr. Hatter and our Board of Education for inviting us to present tonight. The social emotional supports are so critical to the development of the whole child. And it was a pleasure to highlight just some of the many ways that our dedicated and talented team are working and growing to meet the needs of all of our children. We're very proud of their work and their commitment to our children, and we are grateful to you for your support as well. Mr. Rosen.
So, thank you, everyone, that was, that was great, thank you, everyone. Dr. Hatter, this is Carbone, Mr. Bignani, we're open for any questions that you may have?
For me, it's not, if I, if I can just start, I don't have any questions, I just want to say thank you to the clinical team. And I think you may agree with this, it feels like we've met more together. I've been meeting with you more this year than I did in my first three years in the district combined. We've spent a lot of time together and I am just so impressed by so many things, but specifically your commitment to the children of Yorktown. I say that as a proud superintendent and I say that as a very grateful father in this community as well. Thank you so much for everything that you're doing. You, you were so invested and I see this in the hours that we've spent in meetings. And Mike, you announced this earlier in the meeting, but we are partnering with Westchester Medical Center for a $150,000 grant to support the social and emotional well-being of our students at the secondary level. This is a very, very big moment for our school district. We have, we, we've worked with Westchester Medical Center last week, we had a conversation with them. They're going to be applying for the grant, but the opportunities that this will bring for our students and the training sessions that this can bring, not only to our faculty and staff, but we want to bring the trainings to the community as well. And there are some wonderful opportunities that will be available to members of our community and members of the broader Westchester County as a result of this grant. So I'm, I'm just honored to be just one part of such a dynamic team. Thank you, well done.
Thank you. Before I open it up to the board, I just want to say one thing. Fifteen years on the board and the growth in this department has been phenomenal. And you guys have come to us before and you've shown us plans and we said, what about? And you've always willingly opened it up and expanded and you just keep doing more for our students. And I couldn't be prouder of you as a department, you're awesome. You've really done, we couldn't do this, you are a big cog in the wheel for the whole child because without this piece, the learning doesn't really happen. And so I just want to thank you all for everything you do and for how you put our students first all the time, every day. So, thank you. I'll open it up, Mike, did you have any questions?
Thanks, Jackie, I don't have any questions. Just want to say thank you to everyone for a wonderful presentation, very extensive. And I appreciate everything that you've been doing for our children and this was very eye-opening for us, thank you.
Lisa.
Thank you. Also, I want to thank you for your presentation tonight. It was, it was fabulous, you guys are definitely a wonderful team and I can see how cohesive you work together. So thank you for that. I do just want to ask you, you know, the kids are on a screen now as opposed to being in front of you and I think that must make it difficult for not only you, but also for the teachers and the other, the other adults in the, in the school to recognize when there might be something going on that we have to help them with. How do you, at each grade level, either the elementary, the middle, the high school, how do you, how do you handle that? How do you help the kids when, when you recognize that maybe that there's a problem? And are you finding it to be more difficult with them being on a screen?
Work our way down, Jessica or Justine, you want to jump in?
Lisa, you bring up a good point, it has been a challenge for sure. You know, we're not used to meeting with our students on a computer screen. However, like the teachers, we did find a way to kind of get used to it and adapt. I think one thing that has been really important are the relationships that we built with the students prior to the pandemic and working with them in this way. You know, I know in the high school that was a little difficult for our ninth grade students, for example, who were new to us that maybe we didn't have the opportunity prior to the pandemic to creating those relationships. But I, I think that we use some of the same strategies. It's important for us to be able to see them on the screen, kind of be able to have our eyes on them and to be able to provide them with a safe space to come to us and open up about what is, you know, going on for them. I think in addition, our collaboration with parents, checking in with parents to see, to just say, you know, what are you noticing? What are some of your concerns? Because, you know, they have a lot of insight that's helpful for us in the work that we do with their children. And also collaborating with any outpatient providers that our students may be working with in the community. So it's been, I think, to kind of respond, I think a lot of it has been increased communication with others that may be also working with the student or the family.
Anyone from one of the elementary schools, thank you, Justine, anyone from one of the elementary schools want to?
Yeah, Mike, I would sort of echo that, I mean, with our youngest learners, you know, there's always more partnering with parents. It's important to remember that the vast majority of the elementary school students are being seen for counseling in person. So we're not doing as much through the screen anymore, which is really helpful, especially for our youngest learners. But we do have some students who are, remain, you know, fully remote and that we do see over the computer. And as Justine said, I think it's just really important to be partnering with the other adults in their life that are seeing them face-to-face so that we can make sure that we're addressing whatever kinds of issues that, that they have. But it certainly has been helpful compared to the spring to have my kids back in, back in front of me. It's a lot easier to, to manage five-year-olds in a social skills group in person than it is over the computer.
I also wanted to just acknowledge when there are big changes district-wide in how we're going, what we're going to be seeing from students, the clinical department really puts its heads together. So when the shutdown happened in March, we immediately got online with each other. I think we were like at almost every other day brainstorming what we would be looking for, what we would be seeing in students and in families in the weeks to come. And we've kept that work going through the pandemic. It's changed, obviously, every month there's different things that we look for, but we sort of brainstorm off of each other. What are the signs we're going to look for? What are the families district-wide that we're going to be concerned about? How do we find problems when the children, when the families aren't in front of us at all? And now, as Katie said, now they're more in front of us. So we've brainstormed things to look at, whether it's attendance, preparedness, contact, frequency. You know, we've sort of looked for, you've become sort of like a smoke detector, looking for, in some ways, looking for the, the people that you should be concerned about that are more at risk. And we've been doing that work since March 13th of last year.
Thank you, Denise.
Cheryl, do you have any questions?
No questions, just a comment, I really wanted to thank you all for the support that you provide. We know education is not a one-dimensional platform or process. So the levels of support that you provide are just really nice to know that they're out there for our students. So thank you.
Thank you.
Rashman.
Yeah, I, I wanted to thank you all for coming and for your very detailed presentation. I had a question about, are there specific concerns that you had anticipated or you might be seeing with the elementary school children versus the high school children?
Katie, do you want to answer?
You know, they're similar, but they're different, you know. I think one of the things that we've seen an increase across the board is anxiety. You know, uncertainty brings anxiety in young children, in older children, and in the adults around them. I've certainly seen kids this year who are managing a lot of crises in their family. There's been, people are losing jobs, people are under stress. We've had children lose parents this year. We have people who've gone through serious health crises. So you see those things throughout, you know, the age span. How the children react to those situations are sometimes different. But, you know, little kids are dealing with serious problems as well. I just think they sometimes manifest a little bit differently.
Thank you.
Pete.
No, I just wanted, no questions, I wanted to thank you too for a really wonderful presentation and thank you for all that you do. Difficult year for everyone and the work that you, you all do and it is fabulous for the district, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Pete.
Yeah, I, I echo what Pete said. We're so fortunate to have such a fabulous team in you guys. And it's obvious you work as a team, not in specific buildings, but together for the good of all our students and we're so grateful for that, so we just thank you so much. Mike, thank you for putting your wonderful team together, we truly appreciate it. Caroline, thank you for all the hard work you do on the district level as well. And we just thank you all for all of your hard work.
Thank you, Jackie.
Great, thank you so much, and an acknowledgement of our building principals as well. Our principals really catalyze so much of the work that's happening in the school. So I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge all of the fine work that our building principals and assistant principals are doing for our students each day in this capacity. So for the members of the clinical team, thank you so much, you're welcome to join us. We have a great budget presentation that we're going to do next. We have a wonderful reopening update that I'll be giving. We're going to take you out of panelists and put you into the attendee area if you do happen to drop off the call in preparation for tomorrow. Have a great evening and I thank you for being here tonight and I thank you for your flexibility. This presentation was initially supposed to be a little earlier in the school year, but due to, I'll be honest, I probably spoke too long during one of my updates and we didn't have enough time for an additional presentation. So I appreciate your flexibility, I don't want that to go unnoticed as well. So thank you so much and I have a great evening and I'm sure we'll connect at some point this week.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
So the next part of our superintendent's update is just a general update. And the general update will be with regard to a couple of things, actually, not just our reopening. But I do want to just speak briefly to our class of 2021. We have a terrific group of graduating seniors. We are planning is really starting to ramp up as we look to the spring and some of the ways that we're going to be honoring the class of 2021. Parents and guardians of children who are in the class of 2021 should have received an email today with a really exciting opportunity, it's cosigned by Mr. DiGennaro, high school principal, and myself. We are working with the Yorktown News newspaper to honor each of our high school seniors, class of 2021, in the Yorktown News each week. So about 15 to 17 seniors will be recognized, their picture, their graduation picture will be included. It's optional, not everyone has to participate, I do hope everyone does consider participating. But again, it's an optional program that, that we're working with. Thank you to Brian Marshausser at Yorktown News for providing us the platform to recognize our seniors. And it'll be a few sentences about our class of 2021, they're a terrific group. And this is just one of the ways that we'll be recognizing them. We are discussing the different events this spring that will be recognizing our seniors. So I share that with you just because of the immediacy of the email that we sent out today. There's going to be a relatively quick turnaround time for providing us a few sentences about either future plans or something at Yorktown High School that the student particularly enjoyed, whether it's the arts or athletics or some other aspect of the high school experience and certainly the senior portrait that was taken. So I share that with you, more information to follow, but some really encouraging and optimistic news. And we're seeing a modest uptick of seniors, high school students in general, but some seniors returning for the in-person option to finish out senior year, which is exciting. What I'll do is I'll just quickly transition into our reopening update, the survey closed for determining the instructional model for the remainder of the year for our phased-in approach to the return of students to in-person learning. I just want to start, when I say all students are returning, I just want to qualify that because it's not necessarily all students returning. We will have the fully remote option available. In fact, most students in the survey have decided to maintain their current instructional model. So students who were fully remote, for the most part, are remaining fully remote. Students who are in person or hybrid are coming in five days a week in person. So I sent out the schedule last week on the return and then I think it's pretty explanatory. We have the calendar, but I also have the bullet points that were included in the letter. The barriers are a really important part to our reopening. Mr. Verbois, our director of facilities, who you will see in just a moment when we transition to the budget presentation this evening. Mr. Verbois and I had a conference call with the vendor who, and the vendor shared with us. and the vendor shared with us that the barriers are being shipped out of Detroit, Michigan on March 18th. The kindergartners are coming back on March 23rd. So I spoke to Mr. Verbois and I looked him in the eye very candidly and said, are we going to be ready? And I believe the answer will be is yes. The answer is yes, we will be ready. We have this plan A. We expect barriers by the weekend. And if not, we do have a plan B in place. So we're looking forward to welcoming our kindergarten students back on March 23rd, which is just a couple of weeks away at this point. And it's an exciting development for us. And then we'll phase in the reopening, reopening in accordance with the calendar that we put out. For the survey, if anyone watching this call or if you're watching it tomorrow, once it's posted to our website, we had about 28 or 2900 people respond to the survey. That means 500 people plus didn't respond to the survey. So while we almost were at 3,000 respondents to the survey, which is terrific to have 3,000 people respond. We had 1,000 responses in the first hour to the survey. And I would just encourage anyone who hasn't responded, you can send me an email. You can call my office. That's probably the best thing to do. 243-8001 is my direct line. Call anytime. And we can have you registered for whatever model that you think would be most beneficial to your child. So that's the survey component. Thank you to all who completed the survey. Again, it's very helpful in our planning. With, with regard to the reopening, there really aren't, there are some questions that came up during the last presentation. One big question is about lockers at the secondary level. Will we use lockers at the secondary level? At this time, we don't have plans to reopen the lockers. We want to keep the children moving. We are working through the details. We understand the backpacks are heavy and we certainly will be preparing for that and planning for that. We're cognizant of that. The big question that I'm getting at the elementary level is with regard to quarantines. If my child has to quarantine because riding the bus, and I'm going to be very transparent with the community on this and very open and honest, your child will not be able to sit every second row or every third row on the bus. There will likely be somebody sitting behind them. There will likely be somebody sitting in front of them and somebody to the left. And in some instances, on maybe three or four of our 71 bus fleet at this time, there might be somebody sitting in a seat next to your child. We don't have the capacity at this point to go from 71 buses to 95 buses. So that is just a reality that will be part of this. The students will be masked and we absolutely will make sure that the driver is aware and tries to enforce that as best that the driver can. But for the vast majority of our buses, most students will be sitting alone in a seat. Somebody in front of them, somebody behind them. We're creating a zigzagging pattern and alternating zigzagging patterns on either side of the aisle to maximize distance. But that is just one reality that I want to be very upfront, transparent with the community on is that not on every bus will we be able to create the distancing that we all would desire. So that's a consideration. We're seeing that ridership from the respondents who've transitioned from fully remote to in person is not as high as I expected it would be. I think many people are going to be either at the high school level, driving to school or getting a ride at the other levels from a parent or guardian or some other adult who will drive them to school. So that's something that the survey data has told us. But other than that, those have been the big questions that have come up with regard to quarantines. In terms of the quarantines, we are working to have a synchronous live component at the elementary level. It will not be from the classroom teacher. The classroom teacher has to be with his or her students. So we're working on having a live synchronous component at the elementary level, but the majority of the day will be asynchronous. If it's a, it's a individual quarantine, if the whole class is quarantined, that's a different situation where we would provide fully remote instruction and in our fully remote model, which we've experienced in the past, which is a few hours of live direct instruction. At the secondary level, the quarantines are a little more flexible because the model of instruction is more flexible. So there will be an opportunity for students to participate in their classes if they're quarantined at the secondary level. But at the elementary level, we employ a far different model than they do at the, than we do at the secondary level. That's essentially where we are. That's our, that's the update for today. There's really not much new information to share from last Wednesday outside of the fact that the survey has concluded. We're analyzing the data. We've cleansed some of the redundant answers. In some instances, three, four, five, or six responses were submitted for a single student. So we had to go through the data to just make sure that those redundancies were eliminated. But we're looking forward to welcoming our students back and there's a lot of excitement out there for this. Jackie, at this point, if it's okay with you, I'm going to conclude my presentation. I can take questions if the board has those. Or I can move to the general support and employee benefits and facilities installment of our budget series.
Does anybody have any questions or can we move on to the budget? Budget?
Budget. Okay, very good. This evening, Mr. Cole will be delivering our next budget presentation. At this time, Yvette, if I can ask for, oh, Yvette's one step ahead of me. So Dennis Verbois is joining us on this call and Dennis is our director of facilities and just an asset to our district and to our team. But at this point now, we, is Dr. McGinnis going to also be joining us for this portion of the presentation? And here comes Dr. McGinnis. Okay, so Tom, at this point, I will turn the presentation over to you. And Tom, thank you to you and your department for everything that you're doing. These are not easy times. So every time I walk into Tom's office, it costs, it costs money because I have ideas on how we can return students. And he's just done such, he and his team have done such a remarkable job of putting the students first in this return. So Tom, thank you for the regular part of the job that you're doing here and then all the additional things that have been added to your plate this year. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Hatter, and good evening, everybody. Tonight, we'll provide the fifth public information session in our seven-part budget series. In the following slides, we will discuss the general support and employee benefit sections of the budget. The general support section also includes the facilities operation. Next slide, please, Yvette. The Board of Education section includes the Office of the District Clerk as well as the mandated cost of the annual vote and elections. We continue to use the bold software system and automated means of tracking and controlling the voter rolls. The cost of this software is captured through our BOSI's cooperative, rendering it subject to state aid in the subsequent years. The matter in which this year's annual vote will take place in person or by mail, as was the case last year, has not yet been determined by the state. Next slide, please, Yvette. These sections encompass the Office of the Superintendent and the entire financial operation of the school district. In the financial section, money is budgeted for the settlement of employee contracts across the breadth of the entire school district. Central administration and finance includes the equivalent of eight employees. The contractual expense section includes the cost of partially outsourced payroll functions, the fully integrated accounting system known as Envision, the cost of outsourced Medicaid services, educational data cooperative bidding services, outsourced independent asset management services, and the cost of the IRS-compliant administration of the district's deferred compensation plan. Next chart, please. Two more areas related to the financial operation that capture the cost of auditing, both internal and external audits, and the cost of the claims auditing function, all of which are unfunded mandates from the state of New York. The cost of the treasurer's office and legal counsel services are also represented here. Next chart, please. Human Resources is home to three employees. All of the costs associated with recruiting, benefits management, and employee relations are captured here. The special items section of the budget is where we find liability insurance costs, the cost of Xerox workstations throughout the school district, and some of the BOSI's related administrative costs. The liability insurance costs include the general liability coverage, crime coverage, and in-fuel storage tank insurance premiums. We entered into a lease agreement for Xerox workstations in the 2018-19 school year. We will not have a change in the annual cost in 2122. Note the last two lines in this page are related to the BOSI's budget. We are part of the BOSI's consortium made up of 18 school districts in our region. These costs, administrative costs of the BOSI's operation and the BOSI's capital projects costs are apportioned to each school district based on a formula that includes primarily assessed valuations in each school district. Property tax refunds are payable to other school districts when properties straddle two district boundaries. The homeowners have the ability to elect the district they want their children to attend. So our collected taxes by law must be reimbursed, in this case, to the Chappaqua schools. The total cost declines as one of the two properties in this classification no longer has school-aged children. Next slide, please. Next, we will move along to discuss the facility section of the budget. Next slide. This is just a brief summary of the school buildings under this umbrella. The French Hill School is still idle, but being leased out to 11 individual tenants. The school district's wrestling program is located in the building and we retain a series of rooms for storage purposes. We currently generate revenue from tenants sufficient to cover routine maintenance for the buildings and grounds on that campus and provide a modest positive cash flow that reduces the tax rate. Next slide, please. The total staffing in the facilities department will remain at the same level as the prior school year. Here's a brief distribution of the positions by both title and location. Next slide, Yvette. The operations of the physical plant section includes costs related to all staff salaries, heating and cooling energy costs, and all of the materials and supplies necessary to support operations. The cost of snow removal operations, providing access to outside community groups, and the oversight of the French Hill School Building, idled since 2010, are also captured here. The heating fuel contingency was eliminated in last year's budget as part of the comprehensive approach to reduce the overall budget. That contingency is not reconstituted in the 2122 school year. Next chart, please. The upkeep codes reflect the large amount of work we are now able to do within the house labor in the form of carpentry, HVAC systems, plumbing, electrical work, and site projects. We also utilize outside contractors obtained through bids and requests for proposals to perform more in-depth work on heating and cooling systems. Next chart, please. In total, the entire general support section of the budget will increase by just over $51,000 or one half of 1%. Next slide, please. We'll now briefly discuss the benefit section of the budget. These are the costs that are not allocated to individual areas of the budget. Next slide. In 2021-22, total benefits costs are expected to rise by just over $274,000 or approximately 1.3%. The primary cost drivers are the pension system cost contributions, an unfunded mandate from New York State, which increases by just under $200,000. Health insurance costs remain relatively unchanged due to a relatively low percentage increase in premiums and the mix of plans being selected by employees, that is, family versus single coverage or declining of coverage altogether. The district has established a reserve fund to help mitigate the rising cost of the pension system. We are asking the Board of Education to once again consider contributing a total of $1 million, $500,000 from the ERSS reserve and $500,000 from the TRS reserve to directly reduce the cost of these two items, providing tax relief as a result. Next slide, please. Here's a remainder, a calendar of the remainder presentations of the budget. Next week, the 15th of March, we'll present the entirety of the instruction budget, including special education and technology. And then the following week, the superintendent's budget presentation to the Board of Education. We'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have about the material we just covered.
Thank you, Tom. Very comprehensive as always. And I just want to point out that Dennis Verbois, who could be remote, is in his office. So he worked very hard. We know he's there. It's not a bad, thank you, Dennis. Mike, do you have any questions?
Uh, yeah, thanks, Tom. Can you just speak a little bit? It's always a concern of mine regarding the fuel contingency or lack thereof and how we're tracking this year where fuel costs have risen significantly in the last several months and what it might mean for next year.
Sure. Typically, we would include a $50,000 contingency for fuel in the operating budget. Last year, that was one of the items that was removed in an effort to reduce the tax rate increase on taxpayers. This year, we are under budget fairly significantly in fuel oil by about $120,000. So we think we can absorb a large portion of an initial increase. It's a matter of how far we think those prices are going to go. And that's something we can't answer. I think oil is hovering around $65 to $70 a barrel currently, which is significantly higher than we were expecting. So your guess is as good as ours as to where it's going to go. So we did have some concern about not including it this year, but we are sensitive to what taxpayers can absorb in this environment.
Okay. I'm not, yeah, like you said, I don't know where it's going either. I don't think it's going back down anytime soon though, so it's it's tough to figure out how we should handle that right now, but we could, we could circle back.
Lisa?
Thanks. Thanks for the comprehensive presentation, Tom. And Dennis, thanks for being on here. I just want to compliment you and your team. The grounds at every building and the buildings themselves are always in amazing shape. And no matter what time I go in the building, it's always fabulous. So thank you, Dennis. I know that's because you work so hard and you, you know, your team does such a great job. So thank you for that. I do have a question. You know, Tom, you know, I work in insurance, so I'm looking at that line on the insurance premiums and I see that there was an increase. Is there a reason for that? Do we have an issue there that we should be concerned about?
Well, the, this is the first increase in this line item in several years. We've been very good about increasing some of our deductibles and so forth to keep the premium increases in check. But as you know, working a lot in this, in this field, a lot of the premiums are based on our loss experience. We have had some significant losses in the recent past, including the most recent cyber attack that we went through last fall, which was covered by our insurance. So part of the increase would be as a result of the loss experience and part of it would be just the escalating nature of the premiums given the environment of payouts the insurance companies are happy to make. So all in all, it's a relatively modest increase, but a sign of the times with regard to what we have to do to protect ourselves, not just from general liability inside the district, but from those who would cause us harm from outside the school district in terms of cybersecurity.
Thank you, Tom.
Cheryl?
Yes, thank you, Tom, for that presentation.
Wait, Cheryl, we can't hear you. Cheryl? Cheryl? So we can't hear you. Can you start again?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, you're breaking up a little bit.
All right, you know, yeah. You got it? Okay. I had a question regarding the use of the $1 million to reduce the pension costs. I was wondering if that was considered part of the 1.3 million that we approved previously to comply with the tax cap limit?
Yes, it is. That's a good question. The, when we went through the tax cap calculation presentation, we asked if you would agree to be using 1.3 million dollars of total fund balance. This million dollars would be part of that 1.3, so it's not in addition to that. And the 1.3 million dollars is very much in line with our historical use of fund balance for controlling and mitigating the tax rate increase impact to taxpayers.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm going to go to Pete, but first I want to acknowledge that I'm going to go to Pete, but first I want to acknowledge that Sheila McGinnis is on the call, too. So we want to appreciate her coming tonight, too, and setting up late for us. Thank you. Pete, I'll go to you.
Tom, I'm going to circle back on the fuel. So aren't we part of the consortium that we, to buy the fuel?
Well, we're not in a consortium, but we do purchase off of state contracts. So we do avail ourselves to the, what is, in essence, a cooperative statewide, yes.
The state does nothing to, I mean, given the buying power that the state has with all the other districts that are part of that fuel group, there's nothing there that could help us in a sense to, you know, it's a question I ask every year to hedge our fuel and
There's nothing, I know exactly where you're going. There's nothing in place for us to be able to hedge the price as some kind of protection for future escalation. That's all on us and what we're looking to do in the operating budget.
So let me ask you this. Can we do it privately? Can, so where, can we buy futures in fuel, in oil, to almost hedge our risk?
Yeah, I think, although it's a great idea, I think we're going to be constrained by our own policy and in most cases by the laws of the Education Department of the state of New York. We are obligated to bid everything, everything that is a commodity. And the way we get around bidding individually is to purchase off of a state contract, which has, in theory, been bid out statewide. But we don't have the ability to buy futures in an effort to hedge against increases.
And are we also bound by certain things to how we invest money?
Yes, and that's all embedded in policy. So we don't do anything more grand on an investment scale than certain money market accounts that are all collateralized by US treasuries. So we're not very extravagant and nor should we be, I believe, with regard to our fiduciary responsibility.
No, I get it. So that's all I got, Chuck. We're going to keep asking, Tom, as long as I'm here.
No complex financial instruments allowed, Peter.
Tom, I have a question on the line item that says upkeep of the buildings. And for next year, we seem to be projecting downwards on that. And could you speak to what might be driving that? Is it because this year there were significantly more, you know, money spent? So for next year, we're not, you know, anticipating the same kinds of expenses, or are there other factors?
Sure, I'll let Mr. Verbois answer that if you'd like, but I believe, Rushme, it's merely a a reduction in one category to be moved to another. But you're talking about the $7,500 reduction to the upkeep of buildings?
Yeah.
Yes. So if Mr. Verbois wants to weigh in on that, I believe it's been moved to the upkeep of alarms.
Yes. Good evening, Dr. Hatter, Ms. O'Shea, and Mr. Cole and distinguished board members. Thank you for this opportunity to be with you this evening. Yeah, that's exactly what that is. It's more right sizing the other codes. So we're really not taking anything out of what we've been doing in upkeep of buildings. It's maybe just moving the monies where they were spent or transferred in future years. One of those codes is upkeep of air conditioning and the alarm monitoring, as Mr. Cole alluded to.
Great, thank you. That's what I thought.
Sure, and if I could just double back to that fuel oil. One big saving, or what has been saving for us the last three years is the opportunity that we've had in each of the three past years to top off our tanks in June. We have 80,000 gallons worth of capacity. So when we top off those tanks, we're not seeing another fuel delivery until well into December, January, which is huge when those prices are spiking. So that's been a huge advantage for us the last three, four years.
I get the advantage. I guess, you know, we've always talked about the contingency and I don't know, with the way prices are going, I'm concerned that it's not there this year. I really am, because we know that no matter what happens, you find money in your budget. You've done all this stuff for COVID and everything else, but there's going to be a point where there's no more. And I'm just concerned because fuel oil is a big deal. Mike, did you want to add to that?
Well, actually, what I, I agree, what I would ask, and you, Tom, you and your staff may have already done these calculations, and typically, I wouldn't come to a meeting and, you know, throw something at you. But if you could just maybe take a look and see, based on our typical usage for the year, if we were to buy the number of gallons we need at the current price, how that would match up against the line item? If we're good, then we're good.
Just on empirical numbers, based on where we are this year, we can expect to be able to absorb about a 20% increase in price.
From what we paid or from where it's at now?
From what we're paying currently. So this year, on almost just under a half million dollar budget for fuel oil, we're just over $100,000 favorable. So just on that alone, we should be able to absorb a 20% increase in the price. The other thing is, it's not just contingent upon price, it's also contingent upon usage. So how much of the usage this year has been modified downward because of less occupancy in the building and so forth? So the same thing with electricity. We were significantly under electricity, but our buildings were not used as much as they had been in the past. So I do believe we can absorb some of the increase in both of those energy line items. But I do not believe that if oil goes, continues to go up at this pace and approaches $100 a barrel, I don't think we can cover those costs. So, but it's just a matter of where we think it's going to go. I will say that in the years that we've had the contingency, we've never used it, but this appears to be unusual in the speed and breadth of the movement of the prices here. And the thing about, you know, we do top off tanks in June, it doesn't mitigate the entire cost that we pay. But it does, it does help us to try to take advantage of the lowest price point in the year. I don't know how much of an advantage that's going to be this year, because the prices are already working their way through the inventory system. And I think when we go to top off our tanks, we're going to be at a very high price compared to what we used to pay. So right now, it appears that if you were to ask me right now, at the rate of increase, am I comfortable? And it's entirely, the answer is no. But I just don't know how high the price will go.
Okay.
Tom, I've always trusted your gut and your ability to fill this budget. You've always done right by us. But if you're concerned, that's even more concern for me.
Well, you know, the thing is, look, I have complete faith and confidence in the people who are running all of our organizations. Mr. Verbois in operations, Mr. Rosen, as you saw earlier tonight, special education. And we work hand in hand in doing whatever we can. This year has been an example of that. When I say that we have scraped as much money together as we possibly can to do everything that we possibly can to meet the needs this year, we've done that. So it's a coordinated effort. And this is just, this is just an opinion. I'm not, you know, I'm not an expert on the on oil prices and/or the geopolitical impact of what's going on in Saudi Arabia and so forth. I'm just, I'm just looking at it and telling you that the things that we do to mitigate the cost of of energy prices are probably not going to be available to us this year, because we're going to go into June at a higher price than we left February. And I think that's, that's an extraordinary circumstance for us.
I'll go with your gut, but I, my personal opinion is I'd like to see some sort of a contingency in there this year. I just don't know if
If we do, if we do, knowing Dr. Hatter the way I am, the way I do know him, he's going to insist that we not impact the tax rate. So if we do increase, increase this line item to the $50,000 contingency level we've used in the past, I would recommend that we use an additional $50,000 from fund balance to keep the tax rate unchanged from its current level that we expect. Otherwise, we're going to be, we're going to be looking at a six tenths of a percent increase just on adding the $50,000.
I think what I'm hearing from the board, and I think it's a collective concern for the unpredictable and fuel oil prices are one of those unpredictable factors in a budget. So if it's okay, we understand that that's a priority. I've certainly made a note of it. I'm sure Tom has made a note of it. I believe Dennis has made a note of it. I think we're all in lockstep with the board on the concern here. Perhaps we can look at how the rest of the budget shapes out, see where we land in terms of trying to deliver a budget that's respectful to the taxpayers while providing our students and staff with the resources they need to meet their needs. And we can make a determination as to where, from where we can move the monies, because Tom is correct that I am very sensitive to the tax rate in the community, as you all are. So let's see, next week's presentation's a really big one, where we talk about, I think that's Lisa's presentation that showed with Tom and the instructional team. So if it's okay with the board, perhaps we can assess the condition on the ground at that point and make some determinations. There are some things that the board has indicated will be a priority, and certainly that contingency for fuel oil is one of those items that we're aware of.
That's appreciative, and I think if we can look at it, once we get through all the presentations, we'll see the budget as a whole, and maybe, you know, things might not look the same. But thank you. I appreciate your listening and hearing us. Anybody else have any more questions? No?
Sheila, Dennis, thank you so much for joining us this evening. Tom, thank you for delivering another very comprehensive presentation. At this point, Jackie, that concludes superintendent's report, and I turn my time back over to you.
Perfect, thank you. I gotta use your screen because mine's not working. Oh, no, here it goes. Mine went back. Okay. Motion to approve the minutes for the February 8th meeting?
I'm moved.
All those in favor? A motion to approve the treasurer's report for January 2021?
So moved.
All those in favor? A motion to approve the claims audit report for January 2021?
So moved.
All those in favor? A motion to approve the extra classroom report for 2021? All those in favor? A motion to approve the second reading and adoption of the following policies. 101, gender mutual single occupancy bathrooms. 5154, assignment of students to classes. 5155, student withdrawal. And 8130, school safety plans and teams. Did anybody have questions or concerns on any of them? Think I have a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor? Upon recommendation to the superintendent, a motion that the following, the approved under classified personnel, we have appointments, part-time appointments, temporary appointments, coaches, co-curriculars, volunteers, additions to the substitute list, some corrections, unpaid leave of absence, and under resignation, and under classified personnel, we have resignation for the purpose of retirement.
So moved.
Ron, did you want to say anything?
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge Jeanette Martimucci. Anyone who's come through our athletics program knows Jeanette and has worked with her, and she's just so terrific in her role here in the district. So I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge her contributions. She will be a very big loss to our school district. And we wish her well, of course, in retirement. I wanted to stay, but we wish her well in retirement.
All right, all those in favor? A motion to approve the contract with Silent G Productions for the provisional theatric lighting and for some enchanted evil, sorry.
So moved.
All those in favor? A motion to approve the following contracts for health and welfare services provided to resident pupils attending non-public schools in other districts for the 2021 school year to Carmel, Osning, and Somer School Districts. All those in favor? A motion to approve the budget transfers as listed below? All those in favor? Voting machines. Be it resolved that the Yorktown Board of Education approves the agreement between Yorktown Central School District and the County of Westchester for the use of electronic voting machines, including the other equipment and services for the May 18, 2021 annual meeting, and if necessary, the budget revote to be held on June 5, 2021. And be it further resolved that the board president is authorized to execute such agreement, a copy of which is incorporated by reference within the minutes of this meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor? Let's hope we have a live budget vote this year. A motion to approve the following placements as of March 8, 2021? All those in favor? Gifts, grants, and donations. A motion to approve the following gifts, grants, and donations with gratitude. At Crumpon School, $2,500 from the Crumpon PTA for supplies for Colonial Days. At the Yorktown High School, $2,925 for the varsity ski parent teams to offset the cost of ski lift tickets. $100 from Lindsay Parker for the John Venezia Memorial Fund. $50 from Marianella Ferraro for the John Venezia Memorial Fund. $20 from Enis and Adriello Valdis for the John Venezia Memorial Fund. $100 from John and Bonnie Caruso for the John Venezia Memorial Fund. $100 for Marta Zamora for the John Venezia Memorial Fund. $100 for Alina Zamora. A manuva for the John Venezia Memorial Fund. And $100 from Julia Jo and Angelina Levner for the John Venezia Memorial Fund.
So moved.
All those in favor? We are up to public comment. If there's anybody in the audience wishing to speak, I'm going to ask that you raise your hand. Please have your name on your screen, match the name that you're going to give us, and we will call on you if anybody raises their hand. Anybody want to speak? Okay. Of that, you said we had no sent-in comments?
I didn't receive any.
Okay, then we're going to go to board comments. Pete?
No, I'm good tonight. Thank you.
Rashme?
I'm good, thank you.
Cheryl?
I'm good, thanks.
Lisa?
I'm good, thank you.
Mike?
All set, thanks.
And I just want to thank the clinical team for coming and presenting. They're a phenomenal group of people, and I know our students and staff are so lucky to have them in their corner. So I want to thank them all and Mr. Rosen and Ms. Alameda for all the hard work that they do. Ron, Lisa, Tom, anything?
No, thank you.
And I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor? Good night, guys.